Before we call the meeting to order, we have Pastor Phelps from New Heights. Please pray for us. Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of the meeting of the Fayette County Commissioners shall be the voluntary offering of a private citizen to and for the benefit of the county commissioners. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the county commissioners and do not necessarily represent the religious beliefs or use of the county commissioners in part or as a whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation, and such decision will have no impact on their right to actively participate in the business of the county commissioners.
Let's pray this morning. God our Father and Jesus Christ our Savior, we recognize your spirit here in this meeting this morning, and more than that, we recognize your spirit at work in this community, and we pray that you would continue to work through every individual in this community. Thank you so much for interested individuals and government officials who really just want the betterment of this community, and we know, Lord, more than anything, you want the betterment of this community and the betterment of your people and the good of your people, and so we pray that you continue to work in those ways so that we can see Connersville become a flourishing community that would give glory to you because you have given us life, you give us each day, and we thank you for that. It's great that you would be in this meeting. We don't invite you, we recognize that you are already here, you're already moving, you're already working, and so we acknowledge that, and we live and we work in that. In Jesus' name we pray these things. Amen.
Thank you very much, sir. I call this meeting the Fayette County Commissioners to Order. If you'll stand, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I move that we approve both the regular meeting and the special meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Did you guys get them quotes on that tank?
Yes.
Well, with you guys' permission, I just want to go down and go to the council over this transfer. You guys got that with you, too?
What, the transfer?
Yeah.
No.
Wanted to transfer $35,000 into purchase equipment. Health, group health. Group health insurance.
And that'll take care of the cost of the tank?
Take care of the tank, yeah.
Very good.
I wanted to ask you, from Equipment Marketing Company is the cheapest bid?
Yes.
It says here, price includes onsite delivery and training, but then they've got freight below that, so is it actually forty-seven-nine or?
Yeah, forty-seven-nine, yeah, is the actual.
Okay.
And they're still the lowest compared to the other bids.
Right, yeah, yeah, they are. I just wanted to clarify that in my mind to make sure. And then, the concrete bids, what does Frank's bid consist of?
Frank's just doing the whole pad, putting the plates in and everything that we need.
Well, the reason I ask is, one bid was for twenty-one by twelve, by twelve, and then from TLC, it was fifteen by fifteen foot by twelve inch pad, and I just wondered what Frank's had bid, whether it was the twenty-one foot or the fifteen foot.
He don't have the twenty-one in there, does he?
I wondered why we come up?
It's the same, twenty-one to twelve by twelve.
Okay, with the half-inch rebar?
Yes.
And you'll be able to cover?
That, yeah.
That as well?
Without seeing council, because that's a different, that's concrete on that.
All right. And by putting this tank in, that's going to allow us to have emulsion basically year round?
Year round.
For lawn patching?
Yeah.
Rather than our cold patching?
Our spray patchers, keep them going without having to go to Liberty every day. That's a downtime for us, and we'd be able to get two and a half tanks off a day having our oil here. And then when we're chip sealing, if the distributor goes to break down, we don't have to have the cost of sending a half a tanker back to the oil distributor, you know, so it'll save and help us. We should have had one a long time ago.
We're still going to deliver emulsions out to the site for chip seal.
We can, yeah.
They're not going to deliver down here, and we're going to have to run back and forth to pick it up.
No, no, they'll still, yeah. We could boom it, they'll get nothing done.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, I'd like to see if you guys are okay with that when we come to the tank, and I'll go to council over that, so.
I would move that we approve the bid for the tank itself from Equipment Marketing Company for forty-seven-nine, and the concrete pad work from Frank Construction for thirty-two hundred.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 On top of all that, we've been out to, I've had a crew out brush cutting for the last two weeks, been over, we've been over on the east side. As soon as we start getting halfway somewhere, something breaks down. So it's down now, clutch is out, our Kubota, we've got, probably me, we've got to run it down to Zimmer today because we ain't got no splitter in our grilling, so. And then I got a patch crew out, spray patch crew out, cold patch crew out, kind of short some guys, got one guy who's in a bad motorcycle wreck. I'd like to verify, could say a prayer for him, Danny Jarboe, he'll be out for a long time, so. Doing what we can, we put in, we've had a culvert about every day for a good while now, we've put in about thirteen culverts so far, and we've got more to fit in, so. One more time of the year stuff, we ain't started chipping yet, so we're just staying busy, and that's about it.
Richard, the proposal that you presented to us on the roads, I'd make a motion that we proceed with that plan.
Okay.
I'll second.
Good move, and secondly, is there any discussion?
I have one question for you. You're showing two asphalt, or emulsion costs on here. I'm assuming that?
The RS2 is what we go with.
Yeah, but you've got it from Asphalt Materials and Marathon price?
Mm-hmm.
The Marathon price is the dollar sixty-nine a gallon, I'm assuming we're going to use that cheaper?
Yes, yes.
It'll be the best price throughout the county?
Yes, yeah.
So we'll be using that price?
And they're usually good on that about every year, we've dealt with them.
Yeah.
Now, I had, Terry was pretty good to us for a while, Terry's not on there because when we go to chip, we order, you know, we go through two tankers a day when we're chipping. Well, Marathon, they'll have one there at seven a.m., they'll have our second tanker there by noon. Terry can't do that, they can't get their tankers there on time, usually about two, well, about two o'clock. If we're a posy, we can't get nothing done.
Right.
So that's, we've been with Marathon, and asphalt materials is just too high.
Yes. And you say you've got a budget that can handle this without doing any additional, and that'll still give us the match money for the paving?
It should, yes.
Okay.
Me and Diana, which, we have that meeting coming up, too, so we'll talk more about that.
All right, okay. I don't have any other questions for you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
So, Lord willing, and weather holds out, and we'll have sixteen and a quarter miles chip seal.
As long as we don't get them on the same.
Yep.
All righty.
Thank you, Richard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Bill.
I've got one thing on the agenda right now. I spoke to you about the locks on the jail. I put it in your box. Century Security Fasteners, that's who we deal with on our locks, they're Folger Adam The lock, complete locker, he priced it, they're retail at three thousand dollars a piece, but since we do so much business with them with switches and wires and everything I order for the locks from them, they brought it down to one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars a piece. Really, that's a complete lock, complete system. I just, I gotta take the old out and just put this whole system in. I'd like permission to at least get two and replace two of the main doors, and then later on, get two more, because they're all thirty-year old locks. I want to get the worst doors first. We replaced the one on the control room door a few months back, because that was a half two case, I mean, we had to do that. And these are getting to be half-two cases, too, so. It's just, they're getting to where we can't fix them anymore.
So you've set up a rotating plan where you're going to be replacing the few that aren't?
Yeah, I want to get the main doors first.
Yes.
And then with the old locks I take out, I'll salvage anything I can use to keep the other ones going until we can replace those.
All right.
Now, are you, are there other companies out there that you could get another quote or?
With something like this, you can't, this is Folger Adams is the main lock for the jail, and Century Security is their dealer, and they got to have key codes and so much security involved when you order these kind of locks, that I would suggest not even trying to get somebody cheaper.
Well, if they're giving them to us or selling them to us at half price, you can't hardly beat that.
This will come from King Jail?
I'll have to look and see where we can get the money from.
I'll move to approve the purchase of two locks from Duke, second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved to a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Sheriff Walton?
I just have a few things to kind of follow up on what Bill was talking about. We talked about at the last council meeting about appointing some type of subcommittee for jail maintenance, possibly a commissioner, a council member, myself, Bill obviously would be very imperative to have on that, but if we can maybe talk about that and get a representative from the council commissioners, that would be great, because we have issues with the glass, too, we've talked about that. I had a young man that busted, cracked the glass in R4 Sunday night, got upset, took his food tray, and didn't break it through, but cracked it significantly. Good news is Sergeant Baker, our new jail commander, had his clerk bond money froze, so he will be paying for it, but we need to look into getting some of that bulletproof glass, because that's the old glass where they can crack pretty easy, so if we could do that, that'd be great, getting that committee together, so I'll just wait to hear from you guys who you want to appoint, and I'll let you guys take the lead on that, and we'll get somebody together. Second thing I have, I just want to invite everybody, and you guys, most importantly, Friday from eleven to one in the prosecutor's conference room, we'll be having a retirement party for Jason Bolander. Jason's taken early retirement, he's going to go work full-time for John Gray, and I think the plan is that Jason will take over that business at some point when John's ready to step down. So Jason's put in almost seventeen years in that jail, which I assure you is not easy time, so we really appreciate Jason, and he's our corporal on second shift, he's going to be a big loss for us, but we're excited for him for the opportunity, but want to invite you guys, we're going to have smoked pork chops, all kind of food over there, so you know we like to eat. Last thing that I got is the Citizens Academy, I talked about that at the council, too, wanted to invite any of you guys that would be interested, if you'd like to just either be a participant or just come. That'll start June 29th, that'll be on Thursday nights from six to eight for four weeks. We'll cover everything, criminal law, the workings of the jail, the history of the sheriff's department, we'll do some emergency vehicle operations, we'll have a simulator to go through, it has hundreds of different scenarios where you can kind of get in those shoot-or-don't-shoot scenarios. Also be some ride-along time with that, but I'd like to invite you guys, if you'd be interested, just to come and observe, you don't have to be an active participant, love you to do that, and anybody else in here. We've got about ten signed up, and looking to have about twenty, twenty-five, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I don't know if they're, I didn't see them.
Morning.
Good morning.
I don't have anything to get approved, but I just want to let you guys know, I've got three computers on the bench, I'm doing research on various projects that we're trying to figure things out, the mail archive situation, I'm still working on that, just a lot of stuff going on, a lot of research and a lot of reading. The ransomware that's been going around, that hit the news over the weekend, to my knowledge, we've not been affected by that, I've not had any reports of it so far, I've done what I can to mitigate that, I mean, all the computers are patched against the vulnerability that that's supposed to use, however, I don't know what you've seen in the news, but over the weekend, that WannaCry ransomware hit over two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand people in the course of about three days. Some of the victims are big names, you know, Frankfurt University in Germany, the national health system in Britain, I mean, if they can get hit with the resources that they have, if we become a target, there's very little that we can do. I mean, we can do what we can, I've got backups of everything that I can think of, but, you know, it is what it is. We're a small county with very limited resources, and if we get hit with something like that, then we're just going to have to do what we can to get by it. Other ransomwares, places that have been hit recently, the Community College in L.A. got hit right before their start of their January term, and they had to pay the ransom out because they had no time, and we probably, we might end up being in the same situation, I don't know, but like I said, I'm trying to do everything I can at all abilities to prevent what we can. Other than that, there's not a whole lot going on as far as getting things for approval, I'm trying to get a plan together for next budget cycle as far as things like the firewall and things that I'm going to have to request money for extra beyond my budget for next year, so. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, off to my next thing on the list.
I'm here to ask for a letter, I believe Jane may have already typed it up. IACAC, the Indiana Association of Community Corrections Act Counties, needs a letter from the commissioners appointing the director of community corrections for voting rights at the board meetings. They don't want anyone named that just needs to say director of community corrections, that way it'll be good forever, whoever's there.
I don't know if we can give it to them forever. I know that we trust you, Michelle, I'm sure of it. We can do that.
I'll move to approve that.
Do we have to have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
He made the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, thanks.
I'll just pick it up. More?
I have nothing.
You have nothing for today, I'm gonna write. Tiffany Stone?
Good morning.
I have some good news from the extension office. We offered a position for a full-time office manager, and she will, her name is Kayla Walter, and I was just looking for approval for her position, and then we were also able to fill a temporary part-time position, which we'll see if it continues this coming year, but for the moment, it's just the temporary part-time that we have approved for Pam Herman.
All right.
And they both accepted the positions, but pending on their approval.
I'll move to approve it, second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Colin, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
I don't see a council representative. Animal Shelter, Dave Rickman.
Good morning. Last time I was here, I threw one quote out, I'm sorry about that, I wasn't thinking all the way, but I do have the other ones that I'm looking at, and I do have some more information for you guys on that other one. That little booklet will tell you more information about that, that'll know where. I'd like to want a TSC, I'm going to page here. The one that TSC, where they said they went fifty-nine, no, almost six thousand dollars worth, and if you look at it, it's only got like a two-year warranty on it. And I've just heard a lot of people that had them, they wasn't really satisfied, but I heard some people was, but, you know, with that, and you had to order parts, you know, some of them said that it takes a while to get parts in, so. Then I went down to Gilman's, and they got a Toro Zero Turn, but if you look at it, it's not as heavy mower as the other two. It's only twenty-eight, sixty-four, fifty, but if you're looking at a cheaper looking mower there, you know, mowing deck, not as heavy as the other ones and everything. And I looked at some Husqvarns, but I can't find my sheet, which, I like Husqvarns, but to get the parts in, whenever you break a part down, I ordered a part for my mower, and they said it'd be five days, then all of a sudden I had to call them up and ask them, they said it'd be another five days, so I was going back for it. And, you know, if you time ten days, it's up on the grass, it's look like a hayfield, you know, but on the, on the Hustlers, you know, you've got a four-year warranty or four-hundred hours on it. That's why you get the book, and so you can see more information about it and everything. I know it's cost quite a bit, but, you know, I'm just looking at, you know, it's going to save money in the long run, it's going to last longer, and it'll cut down on our mowing time on a, up there with a tractor and everything, where we can get the tractor to do a little bit more of like a Bushhawk, you know, get the everything down, make it look even better. But that's pretty much what I got right now. And I do have other plans in my, I want to do some estimates, I want to put a fence up there where we can have, where the dogs can run a little bit, get some out of the kennels, and have where people can come up and play with the dogs and see how they're going to be before they adopt them, you know, to make sure that they will want them to put in what they're paying them. Which our adoptions are good, on the dogs, our cats, we got plenty of them, we got about twenty kittens that's going to be coming up for adoption, and we are getting the cats, the female cats spayed at right now, so, you know, the adoption fee for a cat that's already spayed or neutered, the spay is about thirty-five dollars for a female and around forty-five for male, you know, no, 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 I'm sorry, it is burdened on male, it was cheaper to get neutered than it was to hay, sorry about that, I mixed it up there for a minute, but, but we still got some feral cats that's going to be coming in still, and if anybody that's got a barn that would love to have a barn cats, they are welcome to get ahold of us, so we can try to find homes for them, too, you know, good mousers and everything.
So anybody that's listening, if you have a barn and you need some cats, they's a guy to call, check with the animal shelter. What's your number up there, David?
Our phone number's eight-two-five-eight-six-nine-three.
Eight-two-five-eight-six-nine-three.
We're open, we're open Monday through Thursday from eight to four. Then on Friday, we're there from eight to six. We're closed on the weekends, but, you know, if you need something that I'm working on the weekend, give me a call, and I'll work with you, so don't feel bad, I will work with you.
You've been doing a good job with getting animals adopted out there.
Well, we're trying to do the best we can, and we're doing pretty good so far, I think, and like I said, the only time I got to do something that we don't like to do is whenever an animal's hurt bad, got, you know, got hit bad, or can't be saved, or something like that, so.
Appreciate that.
Is there any questions?
Now, Mark, you talked to the mayor, what was?
He said whatever we want, go ahead and get it and send him his half.
All right, so we want to take a dollar rate with funds?
Yeah. If I say that's about what has to come, unless there's something else you need to
There's not any money in this year's budget? There's not any money in this year's budget out of regular funds?
There's not enough money in the budget to make the purchase right now. Is it possible to use a donate funds land or replace it with funds after the first year's?
I don't know, I don't know if you could or not. Is this something we've got to get this year, Dave, or?
Well, don't have to, but I would love to get it because it will cut down on our mowing time, and it'll help us out and everything, you know, it'll just, it'll just be an overall better thing for us up there. I'm just trying to, trying to see what else was a help out on our hours, and try to get to show everything else looking good.
We're free to have time with the animals.
Yeah, so we're free to have time with that, and so we do, and we'll try to do painting whenever we need to get painting done and stuff like that, too, inside the kennels and everything. stuff like that too, inside the kennels and everything. Uh, like I said, I am trying to get some estimates on, for some out, on the outside walls.
Yes.
That need to cost with the, it's been up there since seventy-two and we did some patching last year, but the patching is holding up on some of it, but other places starting to come apart. So instead of just trying to repatch again, I'm trying to see if I can get some solid walls to see man up. So I'm trying to get estimates on that, see what it would cost us. And, uh, trying to, trying to get the building back up, make it look a lot better on the outside end, trying to get, but, uh, where nothing else, I had a cement block that fell out on one of the runs. So right now, I, I put the block up, I had a professional put the block up and I put it back up again because the dog's kept on knocking it out. And now I've just got a piece of fence right there holding it up, you know, to keep the block from, from the dog getting over to another kennel. So, you know, I'm trying to get estimates on that and I'm still waiting on the ones for the outside, of course, our safety thing where, uh, I said something about earlier where somebody got hurt, you know, so I'm trying to wait on them to give me some estimates. And I told them whenever we do, we can, if we get everything going, walls help out in some papers out of the way, you know, haul them out of the way so they don't have to. So that cuts in on, on that price one, so.
Okay.
Whenever we get around, whenever they get around to it, send it, I mean, that'd be good.
Let's table this until the next meeting about the purchase of the lawnmower until we can do some research on will we have funds?
On the commission.
Who's it?
Second it.
Ben Booth and Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Colin?
She's not going to be here.
She's not here?
No, she came and said she didn't need to meet.
Okay. Judge Freed. Well, do we have any mail? Okay. Old business, says there is none on my agenda. Uh, Judge Freed, drug court.
I'm getting pretty old, Ms. King. I tell you what, you make me start and stop like that real quick, I have to pull a hamstring or something. I'm not in very good shape.
Gee, I'm sorry for your time.
Okay. This is an unusual reason that I've requested to be heard today. I'm not asking, I'm not presenting anything for a vote or anything like that, but I know in tough budget times, which these certainly are, uh, this body and of course the council as well hate surprises, no one likes surprises. Uh, a few of you, I think Mr. Naylor, uh, on the street, we've, we spoke of this and, and Mr. Jackson and some of the others I've just run into casually, not in any particular effort to do so. I thought I should formally come and tell you that I have approval from the Supreme Court now to start a drug court in this county. Um, I have acquired, totally independent of any county funds, twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant for me to go to the training, uh, to do it, uh, in July. But again, that's funded by the Supreme Court's own funds. I've already got, that's locked up. I'm not asking you for any money at all on that.
Thank you.
Uh, and I talked to some people who was, who served on the Board of Directors of that, assuming everything goes through like it's supposed to. And it's been total cooperation, community corrections, treatment facility representatives. Uh, the sheriff's already told me he's, uh, super excited to serve on that board and can't wait. Uh, but it is going to be an expense, a significant expense, but here's the good news, the ten, the ten oh six money, you're familiar with this, uh, the state money on all the community correction, all that, all that community corrections type money that's been coming down the last few years, you know?
Yes.
It's the only thing that's loose money in this state right now. You know that, right? Okay, so. Um, it also is funding these programs as well, the drug court program, uh, through grants. So I'm confident, uh, not sure, but confident that we're going to be able to secure a grant to fund the program at an eighty percent level. It is an eighty-twenty matching funds grant. So they would pay for the majority of it. Uh, I've spent some time already observing Judge Brian Hill in the Superior Court in Rush County, I've been over there. Uh, he's an old Law School classmate anyway, so we're friends, but, um, I sat in on his whole thing and talked to him a lot about it. He's about a year into it. He's a nice person to talk to. They've just been into it about a year and so he's seen the rights and wrongs and all that. Uh, but he suggested, you know, that we could, he, he was pretty confident as well, he thought we could get, get the money, but we will have to match it twenty percent. Now, Rush County, they run about eight to ten people in their drug court at any given time, uh, and I think their budget is just a tad over a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so eighty percent of that is covered with non-county funds. Uh, you have to have a coordinator, and I may have got the cart in front of the horse here, I don't know if everyone really understands what this drug court is exactly, and neither did I until a moment ago, but just to let you know, for those who don't know, uh, first of all, it's not something we started in Indiana. This is a great big national thing. Uh, and you might say in a, as a summary, that it's a, uh, super-duper probation. The public may think that when a person's on ordinary probation, the probation officers are really able to be right on them, watching them very, very carefully at all times, and they want to very badly, and my probation officers, I love all of them, fine, no criticism here, and when they have to watch three hundred people apiece, common sense dictates that they're, that they're not watching them, uh, as closely as they'd like to. And so, um, this is almost like, you say, the drug court coordinator is like the Superman of probation officers. You only give this fellow or gal about ten people to watch, and that's their whole job, is to basically stalk them. I mean, they follow up on everything. If you, if they told you they were going to go apply at Hardee's, they go over to Hardee's and see if you did. I mean, they absolutely chase down every rabbit hole and soon these people in drug court realize, unlike the whole rest of their lives in the criminal justice system, they cannot get away with telling fit. They're going to be found out. Um, and so it's a whole different echelon of, of intensity and it's been working, so that's the bottom line. Some of the other states that have had it prior to Indiana and Indiana, and certain jurisdictions has had it for a couple of years now, it's working pretty well. They've got some people that are two or three years after release from the program, still clean. So that, that's the, you know, that, that's the ultimate measure, we're not messing around here, that's what we're shooting for. We don't have a lot of matrix, uh, metrics rather for success, other than people get over it and don't go back to it. That's, that's what we're shooting for and, and there has been some success in that regard. Uh, hoping ours will be too. But the real point, just to give you that overview, uh, but also to let you know that there'll be more court time. And we're already the busiest courts, Circumesperia are the two busiest courts in all of East Central Indiana, if you didn't know that. Sometimes people think, oh, well, Richmond or, you know, bigger towns, but no, we're far busier than any other courts in East Central Indiana. This is the busiest dock in this part of the state by far. Uh, but we're going to add a whole bunch to that with drug court. It takes a half hour, it's a three or four hour thing every single week. Board of Directors meets, there's a full-blown written formal report on each participant in drug court that's produced by the, uh, drug court coordinator, a page or two of just about what they did in the last week since the last meeting. We go over that in chambers in a meeting, uh, they make recommendations, people from the board make recommendations, I'll make a decision, then we go out on the bench and I personally address every single week, every single participant in the drug court. They see the judge every single week.
Is this helping George recovery?
Yeah, yeah. It's all about, it's all about, um, it's all about recovery. As I said, that's really the one measure of the program. Um, so truly, you won't be able to accurately measure success for quite some years. You step out in faith here, hoping that three, four years from now, you can say, this worked great, okay? Because the other facet of the program that I like, and that makes sense, if you've ever been around anyone that has an addiction problem, we have a rash of the, um, I call them the carnival hubsters, the thirty-day miracle cure, um, treatment facilities, you know? Give us twenty-five thousand dollars in thirty days and, and you know, you're, you're going to be fine. Well, that just doesn't work. All right? This program is meant to last eighteen months at a minimum, up to two years. And what the participant does is, first of all, uh, they've been arrested, uh, they're on the hook for, uh, substantial jail time. And, uh, well, if they qualify for drug court participation, uh, they end up pleading guilty and we hold open their sentencing, the whole term of the time they're in drug court, all right? For a year and a half. They, they pled at the beginning, the whole time, um, I can stop the show if I don't like what they're doing. You're not taking it seriously, sir or madam. This is over, we're going to proceed to sentencing immediately. I'm done messing around. Okay? And they know. It's, uh, they place themselves in your hands.
Kind of like folding the ax over their head or hugging the...
That's it, that's it, that's it. I mean, you put a lot of trust in, in the judge because they plead guilty, open sentencing, no recommendation, so I can max them at any time. I mean, hypothetically, they'd be asinine to do that, that'd defeat the whole person, uh, point of the program if I were to revoke them the first week, but, um, I could, I could, I could max them the first week if I wanted to. So they know that I have that. This is a, this is a high-stakes game of Simon Says and I'm Simon.
Yeah.
All right? Um, so they'll do whatever I say. If I tell them they gotta take a, take a class on anger management or, or narcotics anomalies, they gotta start attending, they haven't been attending, they have to do it. And, and it's only going to be a week before they're back in front of me, and if they didn't do it, they're going to get it, all right? You know, something's going to happen. And they also let me have intermediate punishments. It's not an all or nothing proposition. If they mess up a little bit, but not badly, uh, I can send them to jail for the weekend and then put them back on the program on Monday. Uh, I can reduce them from, if we have them on house arrest and they mess up a little bit, I can move them back to work release. If they're on work release and they mess up, I, again, as I said, I can put them back in the jail for a few days, a week, a month, or whatever. It's just, it's totally discretionary. Uh, it's a pretty daunting level of responsibility, really, for each of these individuals. I'm basically taking them to raise, okay? And, uh, we'll see, we'll see if I can do it, but I think we're just about out of options around here with the narcotics problem, obviously. So, uh, that's what I'm trying to do, but I really just came to give you the general overview of what this is about. Uh, and then of course, I failed to give you the punchline. If they successfully complete the program, they get the case dismissed altogether. A year and a half, two years out, they met all their marks, passed all their drug tests, they get drug tested three times a week, they gotta pass three drug tests a week, uh, they make it out a year and a half, two years clean like that. Then the, the incentive side, you've got the carrot and stick, the, the incentive side is that they just get their case dismissed. They might have been looking otherwise in their, in our traditional system of two, three, four, five, six, ten years in prison, and they stick with this program for two years and their case dismissed altogether. So obviously, that's a strong incentive on their side. Uh, but, but the thing I wanted to come today was, just to give that general synopsis, but also to alert you that though I think I can fund this to eighty percent, we're going to have to find some money somewhere for the other twenty percent. So I'm thinking, uh, it's going to be in that twenty-some-thousand-dollar low to mid-twenty-some-thousand-dollar range. And that's if we scale at the size of Rush County. I suppose I don't need to tell anyone that our drug problem here is far, far worse than Rush County's.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, right, exactly, but I...
What, what, what happens if we grow larger than the ten, eight to ten? Do we put on another coordinator and another judge or...
Yeah, we talked about that. We get this going, there's, there's no reason why you can't run a second drug court in the same county that happens.
But one judge would be in charge of eight to ten people only?
A little more, that, some of the, in some of the bigger counties, they're, they're more than that.
They're doing more?
Yeah. Uh, and I wouldn't be afraid to do that, I just don't want to start out with twenty-five, thirty, fifty, because frankly, uh, I'm taking this awfully personally, okay? Failure's not an option. Uh, I'm a pretty laid-back guy, but I think I made it pretty clear to everyone on the inside that, I, I joke around a lot and stuff like, this is, this is, this is no joke. This is no joke. And everybody that I've talked to about it, that I've asked to be involved in it, I think understands I've got, um...
People's lives are on the...
Yeah, it's absolutely, and they're putting the responsibility, right, as I said, right in my hands, so, um, pray for me and, um, but, but that's, that's the deal. Uh, but you can phase it into the program run generally in three phases, the first six months, um, you're still just coming out of active addiction at that time, so you're on the most restrictive. Um, generally speaking, you'll be on work release, uh, and then if you successfully get through that first six months on work release, we'll phase you out to a bracelet on home detention, and then the third six months, if you've still been good, the second six months will phase you down to, uh, unmonitored, but walk in two or three times a week or more if I decide, uh, to check in with your, with your drug court coordinator. Um, and it can go up to two years as well, as I said. Sometimes people have these setbacks, and so I want to extend it another six months, you know, if I think it's still worth it. So that's what we're trying to do there and there, um...
Will you have the capability to extend it up, I mean, pass that two years?
They don't recommend you do that, but you can, I think, uh, but you'd have to get a waiver from the person, otherwise, from, from the participant, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's still a lot I have to learn about this. I'm going to a week's training in July, there's a reason why it takes a week. There's a lot of rules like this. Um, so, yeah, uh, that's what we're, you, you can't have them indefinitely. You can't have them sign a contract saying, well, I'm going to show up every day for the rest of my life, you know?
Right. But I mean, if you had relapses, could you allow an extension?
If you're on two years.
If you feel confident that you can...
Still catch them, still, still, still do the job, yeah. Uh, but they, they, I think the general consensus is among the, the shrinks that, uh, if you can't get it done in two years, you're probably getting to the point where you just have to cut back with that person, particular individual, and make room in the program for someone...
For another one.
For another one, you know? But there might be individual circumstances where that would be prudent to do, but that won't be the norm.
Realistically, could this start before next year's budget?
Yes, now, that's the other thing I want to talk to you about. Uh, this ten oh six funding, uh, runs on fiscal year, uh, July one to June thirtieth. Um, so ordinarily, you apply by the end of the calendar year, hoping it'd be awarded money, which then would be provided to you the following July first, all right? So that would be the normal cycle. We would make our, we would make our application, uh, this late summer, early fall, and they would review it, you'd be notified, uh, about the turn of the year, and then you'd get your money on the first of July.
So there's no way we could get started this year at B?
Not this year, but maybe, maybe as early as January first. This is the other part I was going to take. Believe it or not, as successful as this program has been, uh, and Michelle spoke earlier and left, but she's been super helpful, by the way, great community corrections program we have here, I'll be relying on them a lot if this, this goes through. Um, a lot of people were awarded this money last year. As I said, it's been flowing pretty, pretty fast and people have been jumping on the bandwagon. Anytime there's money, it's like blood and water for sharks, right? Everybody's going around. I think some of the people who put in the applications maybe didn't take it seriously and didn't realize the amount of paperwork and reporting that was required to stay in compliance with refunding officers at Indianapolis. Uh, and the reason I think that is, I think it was, don't quote me exactly, but it's something around, around two million dollars, around two million dollars worth of, of funding that was appropriated to individual recipients around the state, and they didn't comply with their reporting. And if you've seen, which I doubt you have, but if you've seen the reporting that's required for this money, you can understand why they didn't want to do it. I can tell you right now, I don't want to do it. It's going to be a bunch of bleary-eyed knights up there at my desk trying to fill out all these reports and write all these things. It's, it's, it's considerable for sure. So I think people just took the money, thought it was going to be easy, then all of a sudden they made, uh, they made these demands on them because they didn't look into it well enough in advance to know that there was a price to be paid for that money, there's no, there's no free...
It's not free loans.
Exactly, exactly. So, uh, they declared them out of compliance and in the, in their third quarter... So, uh, they declared them out of compliance, and in the, in their third quarter, second quarter, third quarter, you get your, your yearly grant in quarterly payments, not all at once. They just didn't give them the money. And they held their money hostage and sent letters to them saying, "You must come in compliance by this date or you're never gonna get your next quarter's worth of this grant, which you've already been awarded." Well, some of them said apparently, "Well, more trouble is worth it. The heck with it. I'm not gonna do it." So, mid-year, the point is, there's a whole bunch of this money that was already granted that didn't get sent out. It was withheld from the recipient counties. And what they did last year in July was they sent out a letter to all the complaint participants and others who hadn't applied before and said, "We have this two million dollars from people who didn't follow the rules, already appropriated, non-dispersed. If anyone thinks they have a program that they would like to enhance in the second half of the year, or would like to start a program mid-year, please send in a very quick application in August, and we'll see if we can divvy up this money and we have it to you by January first." So, what I'm telling you is, it's possible hypothetically that we could start January first if people don't do what they're supposed to and a whole bunch of money gets withheld, you know? So, maybe people got the hint last year that they were serious about that, and maybe it won't be such a high level, and there won't be so much money withheld. So, I, I don't know, there's no way for me to know if we could know that, so. We'll know, uh, I think Michelle thought last year it came out about the third week of July, I think, the notice that we have this stack of cash that we didn't send out. If that happens, I'm gonna try to jump on it. I wanna try to jump on that, on that stack too. So, that would be like a mini-grant.
Okay.
That would be a mini-grant that I would apply for in the second half of the year, get the money for, for the first half of next year, and at the same time then in the fall, I would make an application for the money that I'm expecting to get, beginning July first of the next.
Two thousand eighteen, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm trying to do. But I just wanted to alert you, uh, so it's not a surprise that, and the council, I'm already on the council's next meeting agenda as well, because I know no one likes surprises as I opened with that statement. I will be coming around asking for twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars at some point in the near future, okay? Hopefully.
Well, if we can't find it.
All right.
I'd like to thank you for taking this extra step forward on this too, 'cause we need it best.
Well, that's the job. I mean, you serve the public, that's what you, you all do as well, and I appreciate you. But, you know, we're down to...
We can help our drug situation here in Fayette County. We certainly want to do whatever we can, and I think that will help, uh, the jail situation because these people will be some that will not be going to jail.
Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, eight or ten the first year. If it gets better, like I say, maybe we start a second one, um, and I expand mine, you know, and...
Why don't we do it to help our citizens?
Yeah.
But these eight or ten that get put on, could get put on the first year, that they would carry out for up to two years, then the second year, would you put on another?
Probably the second six months.
I, I mean, or do we have to see those through before you take on a new client?
No, 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 you don't have to do that.
Okay.
It's up to you what you think you can handle.
Okay.
And what your coordinator can handle. It's gonna be a substantial salary, the recommendations I've gotten from people at the state, the Supreme Court has a couple people who are working on this full-time. That's their job. The Chief Justice has a couple people working for it. This is what they do around the state, is these, well, actually, they call them problem-solving courts. It's not just drug court. They also have a veterans' court, family dispute resolution court, all that. But, you know, six months into it, let's say best-case scenario, everyone's passed all their drug tests, everything's gonna be great, everybody moves to phase two, like I was talking about, everybody gets kicked down a level of security from, from work release down to house arrest. Hypothetically, then, I could bring in, like you say, a new class.
Yes.
For phase one.
Okay.
But psychologically, they tell me as well that you have this cohort mentality in this group that's together, and that helps them. That helps them. So, what I would not do, uh, from what I gather, and I'll get this hammered out better when I go to this training, is it's mostly psychiatrists and, and psychology PhDs and stuff that are, they're teaching this class and have done big studies on this. Other states have had this for a lot longer than we. This cohort group, when you come in together, it's almost like a summer camp kind of mentality, you know? They face some of the same problems, they appreciate each other's issues, and as they go through the program together, and what, what Judge Hill has said is, uh, in his session, when he meets with them once a week, he'll even get, participants will yell at other participants, okay? They hold each other responsible as peers. Or, and the same thing is, they'll congratulate him, and, you know, "You're doing a good job." Uh, some sincerity there, as opposed to coming from the government official who sits up on his big old bench, you know, "I don't really care what he thinks, other than I'll do what he says to get, to get what I want." But this is a peer who has no sway over you officially, and you get reprimanded or congratulated by this person, and psychologically, that helps them, all right? So, they move in these groups through the steps, and you try to keep these groups together. So, what I would not do is, three months in, interject five new people into a group of ten.
Yeah.
That's not what we do, apparently.
Okay. Could, could residential rehab facilities be involved with this as well? I mean, could you be putting those people into a private residential rehab facility?
Yes, yes. And in fact, uh, a commercial rehab facility is one of the compulsory members of my board of directors. Okay? I have to have someone from a company that does this type of work on the board. They're showing up every week for this weekly meeting. They, a member of law enforcement, which, as I said, Sheriff Luthlin's already graciously volunteered for that spot, that's like, uh, we have to have a, a public defender, represented from the public defenders group, manage to be seen, who wants to, uh, raise their hand for that duty. You have, of course, the coordinator and myself. Let's see if I'm missing here. Oh, and community corrections as a representative as well, and that, and, uh, and the prosecutor shows up also. Okay, so, seven, I think. So, that's, uh, that's where it is. We're like going to jury room, meet every week for, like Judge Hill, I've served him some, and they meet in about an hour to hour and a half, and they go over every individual, write down everything. They talk, I mean, it's the tale. I mean, this fellow saw his kid, I went with him, you know, I took him out of the work release center because he's still on phase one, and, you know, I went with him to see his kid at the park on a supervised visit. I personally supervised the visit, and it went great. He broke down and cried. This is the kind of thing, we're trying to get him over the hump here about seeing life for what it is, it's a precious thing. You know, we're, we're really getting down to brass tacks here. This is not your usual, you know, police report type of report. We're, we're drilling down into the person's base life. We, we've done enough of this hard-plate cops and robbers kind of game that we know we're losing, right?
Right.
Right?
We're losing.
I, you know, I was prosecutor for many years, and I don't mind telling you, we're, we're losing, not through any lack of effort by anybody, it's just, uh, we've gotta try something different. This is something different. So, that's it. I don't get a vote on anything, I just wanted to let you know, okay?
I appreciate your time.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate it, that's great.
Good morning.
Good morning, Terry.
At the last meeting, there was a question, it was my radio maintenance agreement with ERS, OCI. I have Service Manager Steve Naught here and ERS OCI Representative Matt Alexander here to address any questions, concerns, or anything with this maintenance agreement. You guys want to come up?
Good morning. Again, I'll, I'll answer any questions you have, reference the service agreement for the nine-one-one center. Uh, I might just add just a little bit of thirty-second background. My background is not, both of our backgrounds are from government nine-one-one, public service. I retired firefighter, fire chief from the city of Greenwood after thirty years, and I was secretary treasurer of the nine-one-one board for Johnson County for nine years. So, I was responsible for the revenue and expenses of the nine-one-one system for Johnson County for a number of years in my role as fire chief. Matt is a former nine-one-one director and EMA director for Jennings County. So, we aren't just a vendor, we are a vendor that comes from a background of delivering nine-one-one communication services. So, I would be happy to, to answer any questions. The maintenance agreement that we have on the nine-one-one center is an all-encompassing maintenance agreement. So, it covers all labor and all repairs and maintenance of all equipment that the nine-one-one center use, uses to contact all the public safety agencies in the county. So, uh, there, there's no additional cost, other than acts of God, uh, other types of damage that would, uh, that would happen to the equipment outside of normal wear and tear and maintenance. We do have a senior technician that lives probably less than thirty minutes away from Fayette County, uh, from Connersville here, that is the primary technician that services this agreement. Again, he's one of our longest-serving technicians in our company, and, and he works directly with Terry and her staff, uh, anytime there's a need of any kind. So, it is a one-time payment, and then everything else is covered for the duration of the year. I can tell you that my office covers about thirty-two counties in the central swath of, uh, of Indiana, and I'm not aware of any counties that don't have a maintenance agreement either directly with us or directly with Motorola, uh, one or the other. Typically, directly with Motorola would be for a wireline agreement that attaches to the state's radio core. Uh, most of the other counties didn't have an agreement with us. Ours is a little more cost-effective for those that don't actually touch the state of Indiana's, uh, radio core, so.
So, when, uh, when you come down and do any maintenance or repairs, um, do you, uh, do you have invoices on that as far as time spent?
We, we track anything when we touch sterilized equipment. So, if we touch, um, one of the computers, or if we have to provide services, where we pull one of the radio transmitters and we send it in for repair, we track that. And honestly, as odd as it sounds, we don't track all of the day-in and day-out calls directly to our, to our technician. Uh, again, he, he lives close, he services about a six-county area in this area right here, and so we don't track all of that currently. Uh, I, I've been in this role for about a, a little, little less than a year now, and so we will moving forward, so we can provide the amount and number of times that we would provide services to any, any county that would request it. Um, as of right now, we don't track all of those calls in our system.
Theoretically...
Yes, sir.
Just, all right, I, I'm not asking for actual numbers or anything, but theoretically, what, what would a console or a system like ours run as far as replacement cost?
Replacement, if you stayed with two positions, uh, and you went to similar equipment, or again, that there's, Motorola really has two levels of console systems, an MCC fifty-five-hundred, which would be what you have now, or MCC seventy-five-hundred, which is the next tier up. Uh, that tier also allows for connectivity to the state, which you guys probably don't need, frankly. A two-position replacement would probably be, um, somewhere in the hundred to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's close to that, we went with it and...
The two we just did, Switzerland, were about a hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
We just did two for Switzerland County, and it was about a hundred and fifty, but it was a hundred and seventy, they bought some extra radios, but, yeah, about, about a hundred and fifty.
I may, might add also, one of the, uh, the parts of the service agreement we have with all of our service agreement customers is, not unlike, um, a retainer policy with, with an insurance company or anyone else or an attorney, is that if, if we have five simultaneous service calls, those that are on service agreements get first in line. So, if someone is, so if we get five calls and one doesn't have a service agreement, we're the fifth one that gets scheduled. So, those that have service agreements are first, first to the plate.
Sure, sure.
And you might not think that would happen a lot, but with my previous experience as a nine-one-one director, especially in the springtime when severe weather rolls through, lightning storm, windstorm, a lot of our nine-one-one centers are affected, so we do get, um, you know, it's kinda feast or famine, we get hit, we get hit by, uh, drought storms. You guys would take priority in an instance like that?
I guess, uh, and, Terry, we've got other maintenance agreements, Spelman and VIA were currently discussing yet, and, and so on and so forth, and I guess my only concern with this one, uh, after I got in here and, and I saw it come in front of us, was the fact that we didn't have an official maintenance contract that the commissioner signed, um, as approval of that and whatnot, and that's, that's what raised the red flag.
I, I think it'd been on automatic renewal since two thousand, since January of two thousand thirteen, and Terry and I discussed that, and so we, we provided a fresh, clean copy for twenty-seventeen that, that could be provided for signatures. And if going forward, that's, that's necessary, and that's certainly easily, uh, easily accomplished by us, Terry will ask us to provide a, a fresh copy each year, and we'll provide that to you guys for...
Thank you, that would be great, because...
Could we possibly get a discount?
I'm sorry, sir, I missed your question.
Could we get a discount on this?
Um, currently, we can't. I mean, we've held the price, um, at the very same level for about eight years, and as equipment gets older and older and older, it actually becomes more costly to maintain, and we've, we've held the line on the cost, even though it costs us a little more each year, with more out-of-pocket expenses in order to send it in for repairs and maintenance and, and, and all of the, the PMs that we do the equipment. So, currently, unfortunately, no.
Okay.
Also, this maintenance agreement, every year, ERS and OCI come down and they do a preventative maintenance. They, they go through everything in my dispatch center, down in the basement, up at the tower, everything, and see it, make sure everything's still going as it needs to be. And they're at my beck and call. They hate it, but, and it always happens at the most inopportune times, but...
That's our role, honestly, for, in my, my office for thirty-some counties. When you guys need us most, that's when you need us most, so that's when we're there.
Um, Terry, we've, uh, since the first year, we've had about eighteen hundred dollars worth of extra expense, uh, through claims from ERS. Why, why wouldn't they be covered under this?
For example, I just had to have ERS down here for a issue with my recorder. That's not covered with this. That was so then that the radios can tie into my recorder. That is above and beyond this, so that is a, a chargeable fee. Um, the, we did have to replace the antennas up there, they were, they got hit by lightning. We tried to do an insurance claim on that. However, the insurance claim was gonna be, the deductible was higher than what it was for me to do tower climbers to go up there and do it. Um, if there is, for the P twenty-five that happened, um, there was a lot of radios that had to be programmed for that, that's above and beyond this.
Our radios in the center?
Uh, I believe I absorbed some from the sheriff's department.
Why are we doing that from the nine-one-one system, or, or...
Well, I had, I had several that had to go myself, and I think I might have absorbed one or two with that. I can get you the numbers for that Thursday at the meeting, but, um, but anything that has to do with the mobiles, this is more for, for the, for the things, the equipment, the consoles, the towers, yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, there's, there's times that above and beyond comes on, you know, comes up. Like I said, for the recorder, I have to have the radio vendor there to put it into the punchdown, they know where it goes and, and this and that, so, but there are things like that.
Looking at this invoice, I guess I have a, how do you, I guess I'm in question, how do you establish a dollar figure for each piece of inventory equipment? I mean...
So, so we do that based on our experience with how much each piece of equipment requires repairs and maintenance. I mean, so we have an incident history dating back twenty-five, thirty years, and so we know that a certain piece of equipment, as it gets, uh, each additional year of age on it, will require, on average, a certain amount of not only preventative maintenance, but actual pull and, and repair and, and replace. And so then we base it, not unlike, um, uh, anyone else that does, you know, cost, cost estimate, estimating, uh, we have about thirty years of, of history that our owners use to develop the cost per piece of equipment, and it's standardized across all of our customers. So, it's not, it doesn't change based on, you know, one customer here or one customer there. If it's an MCC fifty-five-hundred console, it's X number of dollars per year for the twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage. If it's an MTR three-thousand repeater, it's X number of dollars for twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage across our spectrum.
Okay.
Whenever a trouble ticket is put in, I just, for the lack of better words, a trouble ticket is put in, it's also a requirement that they, that they send a Motorola-certified technician. So it's not, it's someone that has been trained and certified in that equipment, it's not just someone that thinks they know about the radios. There is a lot of Motorola proprietorship, just like there is with Kenwood stuff and Johnson stuff. There is that, there is a response time as well. For example, the power went out out at Everton the other day, they had, their repeater was down because the power was out. If my tower goes down, you know, they're required to come and put me power there within a certain amount of time with this agreement.
So are there different types of agreements that cover maybe just labor versus labor and material?
There are.
I mean, do you offer different?
We do. Again, typically in a 911 center, I mean, the standard agreement would be a 24/7/365 for labor and equipment. I mean, that's probably 90 some odd percent of the ones that 911 centers choose, because you're trying to second guess when something may or may not go down, and when we'll have an agreed upon timeliness response, and all those types of things. So there are various levels. Typically, as we tier it down a level, it typically would be more toward a commercial customer such as a manufacturing plant, or a highway department, which may not need to be up in the middle of the night, and we could wait till 8:00 in the morning to get them backed up. So that's typically how those are tiered for us to provide services. If it's 2:00 in the morning and we're only covered for 8 to 5, and then we're going to have to charge you for that 2:00 in the morning call, it almost becomes, it really probably should have been written the other way at that point. I mean, most of the outages are, whether that is by coincidence, most of the outages are on after hours in a 911 center.
Sure.
Usually Friday at 5:00.
Yeah.
Sure.
I also want to add, Gary, that some of the issues that with dispatchers, like the phone lines that we were talking about, having a control station, that's above and beyond this as well, so, that's additional, I want to say it's an additional equipment, I guess I should say. But this is basically covers...
Have we seen that invoice yet?
I'll have to look, I don't believe so.
Because I haven't found it in the claims. I'd like to see it.
The one thing we do cover, though, would be coordination of all of the dispatch radio equipment with anyone else that Terry's working with or her staff. So if she is working with a phone outage, and we need our technician to be on site to make sure that AT&amp;T's equipment or whoever's it is, and our equipment talks together, then that's a call to us, we respond, we make sure that those connections are made, and it's covered under the agreement. That's not an additional cost.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. If any other questions come up, please, we're always available to come to answer any questions.
Okay. But I think it would be a good idea that we did have the maintenance agreement that could be signed contractually on a yearly basis.
I think it was provided, Terry, with an original, so I think she can provide that to you, I believe. If not, I will have that to her yet today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome.
I appreciate it. Terry, thank you very much, I appreciate you giving them, asking them here.
Is this what you need then, Gary?
I'm sorry?
That's what you need? You need a printout of what was emailed to you then?
I think we just need a copy of a maintenance agreement that we can have in the auditor's office on file, that's been approved by the commissioner.
Okay. Terry, I have one that's printed out, that may be a little bit better, and it's ready for signature on the second or last page, so welcome to have that.
Is there another one, Jane? Are there any patron concerns?
I'd ask for approval for claims and paperwork.
I'll move to approve the claims and paperwork.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Also, Jane, does that have a signature paper?
Sure.
I would assume that we'd sign it, because we've already approved the claim, so...
Yeah.
Is it just for the president's son?
I think we have a name of this person.
Also, I guess we can have some discussions a little bit, so, Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll be doing department head appointments for July 1st, correct?
Yes.
So we'll do those last meeting in June?
Do the first meeting if you want to.
And then, do we want to have an executive session so that we can go over all those Do those appointments still include EMA and APC or?
Yes.
Directors?
911, EMA, APC.
And animals?
Shutter.
Yep, it's Jane's fault.
Yes. That gets higher and the... Question call, reference to the cemeteries? Got anywhere with that?
I've been researching it.
Okay.
I don't have an ordinance yet, but I'm still looking into it. I give Jane a...
Do you feel that's needed as well?
Yeah, I think so. If that's what they want to do, then yes.
All right. And also the trail?
I've talked to Jessica Paul, that's in the process.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it.
And the other thing, I just remembered, the disposal of property, obsolete property.
Oh, yes.
If the value of it is less than the cost of selling it, or transporting it, or going combined, then you can trash it.
Okay.
But if it's not, then probably sell it.
That probably needs to be added to the minutes, Jane.
I'm sorry?
There's, that needs signed by just you, I think, I think this is going to work. On the property no longer used?
Yes.
You want to say that again?
Yeah, if you want to dispose a property that's obsolete, the cost of selling it and transporting it must be more than its value. Otherwise, we have to sell it.
Did you say on the parks thing, that's in the works? The trail?
Yeah, I've been in discussion with Jessica Paul, and I'm sure we'll have many more discussions before it's... Not a bad thing, it's just, want to make sure we're doing it correct.
You mean, you're wrong.
Yeah, we're getting along, we're getting along just fine, it's just, there's a lot to discuss.
So they're calling their invoice, they estimate a cost for repair for each...
Each piece of item, yeah.
...instead of maintenance.
Yeah, it's very optimized.
Okay.
Turned on anything else, I'll move it motion to the chair.
Your second?
I'll move to the chair.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Maintenance attorney.